It's eight o'clock. Good morning, everyone. So glad that you're here. Let's get a great meeting and a great day going by honoring our country this morning. Let's get a great meeting and a great day going by honoring our country this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mark, start us off.
We have filled the two maintenance positions, so that's good news.
Cindy.
Right now, in our office, each one of my staff members are making a manual, a step-by-step guide for their job description. We have one person retiring within the year, so the next three years we'll have, you know, myself included, we'll all have, you know, 30-plus years in, and, you know, that's kind of hard to get back with all that longevity, but we thought we would do a guide step-by-step, so in case of emergency or something, but just trying to be proactive.
That's good. Ed.
I'm not sure Beaver wasn't here. Just make sure to write in. Good morning. September is National Prepartness Month, so we kicked off the 30-day, 30-week campaign this month. Every day for the entire month, there's a different topic on our social media platforms about how to be prepared.
Good. Jason.
We accepted Justin Kim back in the academy, so we're back to full staff, and football's back on the weekends.
Josh.
Well, last night, I was asked by the soccer team, the boys' high school soccer team, to help arrange for a military appreciation game that we had last night. Had a bunch of donations from local businesses and organizations, and we ended up raising $450 for the Honor Flight to help send a guardian along with one of the veterans, so that was pretty cool.
Paula.
Today, we resume our partnership with the Whitco Career Academy, so we have participants enrolled in classes for their CNC and also for Microsoft Word.
Thank you. Carly.
I'm going to hit it again. Our Addiction Recovery Court is moving right along. We have two people now in Phase Two of the program, so we're excited about that. We appreciate the community's support.
Good. Thank you. Kay.
We have had 41 properties pay that were going to go to tax sale, so we certified 100, so we have a good start.
Good. Amy, please.
Our Veterans Treatment Court is continuing to do well. Our participants are doing very well. We're getting ready to head towards the next phase of graduation coming in November.
Rosemary.
word's getting out about property fraud alert. Last month, we signed up 286 people for property fraud alert through our office, so pass the word.
Jake.
Cleveland, Richland, and Columbia Town and Fire Departments responded on a house fire on August 26 at 4:00 a.m., and we were able to keep the fire contained to the attached garage, and everybody got on sick.
Cool. Thank you for that. That's cool. Kim.
We are still putting away with our reassessment data entry, and we will be probably wrapping that up, I would say, sometime in October. The state's schedule requires this to be finished by December 31st, so we are still ahead of schedule. We'll be starting our new construction, entering new construction from our building permits, so we'll be starting that. And Tom Beam, our deputy assessor, passed his Level Two Indiana Fraser certification Friday, so with the turnover we've had in our office in the last year and a half, both deputies are now certified, so.
Thank you. Scott.
Last week was actually, who's last week, which is our American Heart Association intern. She established 10 blood pressure hubs throughout the county, including all your libraries that you can actually check out on the front of your car if you need to, and one in the office at our office down here if you want to check it out.
Brian.
Morning. Highway Department, we finished up Chip and Seal about a week and a half ago. Should see Fenton Brown starting the mill and paving of Business 30 East as well as Lincoln Way East. As soon as I get a solid date, I'll get that out. I'll get it to Ed, and it's been really helpful with posting that to his Facebook page to get more exposure, so that's what's going on at the Highway Department.
Cool. Jennifer.
Mark worked with me on the two maintenance positions, and we used Paylocity for the first time for those job postings and.
Brad.
Yeah, so drainage has been pretty quiet this summer while crops are still on. I also have a new intern from Columbia City High School who's been working with me in the afternoons, interested in engineering, and we have a little bit of an interesting opportunity coming up for section corners. We're actually going to attempt to dig up and locate one of the original stones from the early 1800s to help Allen County establish their line, much to the chagrin of the Highway Department as we dig up one of their roads. Should be interesting. It's literally just a rock with an X marked on the edge on the top of it.
That'll be fun. Document that. That'd be cool to see pictures. All right. Did I miss anybody? I don't think I did. Did I miss anybody, or is there anybody else that wouldn't care to speak and share anything? All right, we'll jump in then. First item on the agenda is the discussion. We're going to have discussion first before I open up a public hearing on the solid waste budget. Madeline, would you care to come up and speak on the budget, please, and just give a presentation?
Yeah. Hello, Madeline Safe Bartle with Lully County Solid Waste. So with the budget for 2026, there I just did a 4% increase, which is the growth quotient for the state. However, I will say that there is more than a 4% growth for the user fees, so the actual operation budget did drop while the user fee budget increased. Still 4% increase overall. Last year's budget was $1,084,800. This year's budget is projected to be $1,128,100. Do you know if there were any other questions concerning their budget?
So the user fees are going up?
The fees at the solid waste pay, yes. Yeah, not the user fees over, yeah, but the users pay. It's what the actual solid waste pays.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question as far as, and I'm not real sure, maybe this is a question for Chad or you or both of you. When you guys present this budget to us, we're the governing board as far as for approval, but do we have the authority to make any changes, lower any part of the budget? Or do we just have a yes or no, and then it goes back to the solid waste board to make those changes and re-present?
No, I believe that you guys are the one deciding factors on this.
Okay. I just want to make sure, that's how I understood it?
Yes.
I want to make sure you didn't step on any toes.
No, 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 no.
Because I've been on that board for a while too, but I've never come across the presentation coming to council where it's not been agreeable, so it's not ever come up. Thank you.
Yep, not a problem.
I will now open up the floor. We will open up a public hearing. Anybody who wants to share their dismay or just their general gratitude for the budget that's been put together, anything that's in the budget, any discussion at all, the floor's open for you to come forward. I'm not seeing anybody, so I'll have a last call, please. Last call, close the public hearing, and turn it back over to council for discussion and decision. Again, this is for, are we really looking for a decision right now, or is this just going to be added to our October?
The adoption will be at the October meeting.
So we're looking for discussion on any changes that you care to see here to move it forward or to have it reworked before we have to make the approval in our October meeting?
I would just have to say with today's pricing and how everything's going up, I don't think the 4% is out of line.
The only thing I would tie to this yet is I would like to see any raise given to this position in line with whatever we decide for other county employees. That's up to, I think, you guys, Madeline, and your board on how you ultimately do that. So if we do approve a 4% for the budget itself, if there is no raise or a smaller raise given, I would like to see that matched with the position down there. I don't want to see that at the 4%, if we don't give 4% across the county, across the board.
Makes sense.
I think it's a good plan.
Any other concerns as far as it being moved forward to our October approval?
I don't have any concerns.
All right, we'll move it forward, and we'll put the other piece in place, probably in further discussion today. Chad, as far as the director's position raised. Next item on the agenda is Cindy Doolittle, please, with the election purchase machine purchase discussion.
Good morning. A couple weeks ago, maybe we can have, I mailed out, but I got them a different quote. I just want to make sure you all received it. I have a copy. Did you get one?
I think so, but let me see it just in case. This was what came in yesterday?
This is the new estimate for.
You just sent us, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry?
Yeah, that's okay.
As you can see, it went up, and that was because of the tariffs. I do believe if we wait a year or so, it could go up again. I want to do what's best for the county. Yes, it would be nice to have them next year. In 2027 is a city election, so that's a smaller election, but the goal is to have them in place by the next presidential, 2028. But I just want to give that to you. If we do use these for the election in May, we have to order them by October, so they will come in by January, and then the filing period's over, and then we start programming, so that's kind of the timeline on these, this question. But again, I also want you to do what's best that it's coming, however you see.
Is there a learning curve on these for the public when they go to vote, or is it basically the same?
It's basically the same. There's going to be a little bit different, but, you know, we train every year all the election workers, so microvote, we are, you know, there's so much more to it anymore, so microvote will be coming and help training the election workers. Maybe you have some money back there somewhere.
Any other questions for Cindy, please? Thank you. What are council's feelings, please?
Well, it puts a lump in your throat. It's a large amount. I think the prices will increase as the years go by, and eventually we have to pay it, and our budget's going to not be this good in the next few years. It's just a hard, it's a hard one. But we have to buy it, we have to buy it, and I don't think we should wait. So I don't know where we're going to find the funds in three years.
Nick.
I'm kind of of the opposite, not kind of. I'm a little, I'm on the opposite end of that. I think we wait, and we roll the dice and see what happens. I mean, if we can get by with what we have for another year or two, then I'd say we try and limp along until we absolutely need to purchase these.
Yeah, I mean, it is coming. We're going to, because we are, when a machine goes down, we are having to get a processor out of an old machine, but we will have to have them by 2028.
2028. So if we order in two years, I mean, I'm sure the price will go up. It's, like you said, that's a hard decision to make.
I'm not sure that, well, I think if some of this price is reflective of a tariff, I think that issue could very well be worked out by our president by then, and those tariffs are going to go away. Or places that we're importing stuff from are going to cover the cost of when their economy loses the business. So I think, quite honestly, that these tariffs, the part of it could at least be offset by the tariff disappearing and the costs going up. It might, I think it might be the same or lower, so. I agree with what you're saying, and I don't, I'm not scared that the price is going to be higher.
And just lots of unknowns with the tariffs. It's, it sounds like we have to do it anyhow by 2028, but maybe we wait a year and see what happens.
Yeah, I'd rather wait, see what happens. I'm like you, I think it's going to come down a little bit. Can't, tariffs can't stay up where they're at.
We're already seeing companies that were offshoring production come back to the U.S. GM's doing stuff in Detroit now, and so, yeah, I think, I think we probably would see, you know, a better, a price decrease.
So we need to table the discussion to a later date? I think appropriately, instead of tabling it to another date is, no, I don't think it's something we shouldn't table, John. I think it's something that I'm kind of looking for a motion on. We're either going to get them now, or we're going to just wait and see if prices come down, look at it to get it in a year. I don't think we'd want to table it for a year. I think we would probably just ask Cindy to make sure you bring it back up a year from now and keep this information, obviously you will, and add to it then what the price is a year from now, and we can see if we were right or wrong on it, and then look at it then. So I'm not looking for a table, probably just a decision today, and have Cindy bring it back forward in a year.
Yeah, we know we have to purchase them by 2028, so it's just, you know we have to purchase them. I, whatever everyone feels is best, it doesn't really.
Sorry, it's just.
It's going to have to, it's going to be a big bite whenever we have to purchase these, and we know we're going to have to purchase them, so whether now or two years.
Like, I'm in favor of waiting a year and seeing where we land.
Come in, we're good.
I'm in a motion that we do not purchase the voting machines and we wait.
Second. Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? If there are none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and let it be shown as passed unanimously with board members that are present. We're going to back up then and talk about the Wiltley County budget as it has been presented to you. Are there any changes to the budget as you guys have went through your packets? Anything that you have open for discussion before we go into a public hearing for the county budget?
We did change the maintenance over time, and I know you made that request.
I have a question for Tiffany on the raise. What's your feeling on that 4%? Do you think we can handle that, or you think it's better to come down on that? Welcome to the club.
I think we can do something. Do I think 4% would be physically responsible? No, because you have to think of the long term. You know, we're not just talking this year. We're talking every year after, but I do think that you guys have done a great job. Kay's done a great job, that there's room there to do something.
I would like to, and I want to make sure that the information gets shared correctly with you, if you're not aware of it, but Chad, could you just touch on the 100, or the million dollars coming back into budget?
Yeah, that's an agenda item when we talk about our resolution, but Wiltley County Regional Reserve District did not get funded by the state revolving loan fund. We had committed a million dollars as a match or a contribution for that project, and since they didn't get funding, the project won't move forward. So the funds then come back, and we're going to just roll that into County General. And there were other expenses. We didn't quite have the million, so we would have shrunk that number anyway, but it was well over $800,000 that will roll back into County General. And again, it will be number six on your agenda today.
Yeah, that'd be $887,799.12.
And the idea with that, since we're talking about it, is that we could use that for what was called lost revenue. We did that with other monies that were our budget, and we could use those for some larger expenses like medical insurance that I think is somewhere around $300,000 a month, so. You know, it just helps, it helps County General.
Thank you. So I think it's appropriate this time before we have a public hearing that we incorporate a decision on whether we want to add a pay increase to the budget to be presented to next month's meeting for final approval. I've done some work on it and crunched some numbers, and I think, I think we can afford a 3% raise increase. A 3% increase is going to be a 3% increase across the board. Bottom line out of County General is going to be $317,663.79. My proposal is that we take that pot of money, we advertised it 4%, we take that pot of money, and we do an across-the-board raise this year that we've not done in, I think, seven years, and divide that number out, that $317,663.79, by our total number of employees, and give an across-the-board raise of $1,612.51. There's different trains of thought that talk about having that across-the-board raise every four to five years to help offset the increased percentage raises that you widen gaps with within departments, from department heads all the way to your lowest employee. This isn't something that I feel is a good way to give raises every year, but I think it needs to be mixed in. And as I said, I think it was seven years ago since we've done the last one in this manner. So that's what I think would be a good idea this year. I think the budget can support it. I think it would be fair to all of our employees. There's going to be, I am, I am not going to accept a raise, and I would encourage council that we exclude ourselves from this raise. Other than that, it would be for all other employee, all other full-time employees, including our commissioners, I would include in it. But there are, I think, two positions. And remind me, I think it's the surveyor and the coroner that would max out and would not be able to receive that much of a raise because their salaries are set so low. So we would max those two positions out at the 3% of what theirs is. Everybody else then would get the, and that's, we have to do it that way because of the way we advertised it.
I was in favor of this last year, and across-the-board raise, and I also would echo your sentiment about not giving council any kind of increase, but including commissioners. So I would support that plan.
That's just one option. I'm looking for other options and discussion. That's what I came up with that I endorse.
I might have to agree with you on it. I think our lower pay scale spectrum across the board favors them where a person that has $100,000 on it gets a percentage raise on it. I think that we need to take care of our lower spectrum of our employees, and I agree with it.
The audience, if it's been seven years since we've done that, I think it makes sense to, every few years, do it that way to kind of fill that, bridge that gap a little bit. I think it makes sense.
I think ahead on things, so I'm thinking of next year, if we'd be able to do a raise next year or not. I was thinking more of the line on 2%, so if we went in between 2.5%, I'm just thinking ahead because I don't want to see a point where we're going to say we can't give raises, and we're heading that way, I believe.
I don't disagree with you. I think there's going to probably be a time, or possibly take, be a time that can come, that we won't be able to give a raise, and you all know that. I mean, we've got a lot of department heads here. You guys all know that. It's happened before. I don't think this is one of those years. Kim, anything you want to say?
No, I'm just, like I said before, you got to watch what you do as far as raises because we've all been through those real bad times, and we don't want that to happen again. But I'm more in favor of the 2% or 2.5, but, you know, we just got to, you guys are going to have to watch what you do coming up next few years because it's going to catch up. It's got to.
Yep. And you've been on this council longer than anybody. You, I respect that, and I know you understand.
Well, it's hard. It's hard to make them, you know. Well, it's hard. It's, it's hard to make them, you know, everybody wants a raise, but, you know, you, look at your taxpayers that are going to work every day. Do they get a raise every year? I mean, they're the ones footing the bill. The taxpayers are footing that bill, so is it fair to them to take money if they're not getting money at work? So, that's the way I kinda look at it. I just, everybody deserves a raise. I get that, but.
Tiffany, do you know what two and a half percent is? What difference is there?
Um, yes. That would be, we did two and a half percent the way that Thor is recommending. It's two hundred and sixty-four thousand seven nineteen eighty-two. It'd be one thousand three forty-three seventy-six per employee.
One thousand three forty-six.
Uh, one three four three point seven six, where we can always round up and make it an even number too.
And you said two sixty-four and some change.
Mm-hmm.
For total.
So, maybe different to like two hundred and, two hundred and, two hundred and seventy dollars?
I'd be in favor of two and a half percent.
What does those numbers figure out to?
Per employee, three percent would be sixteen twelve fifty-one. Two percent, I'm sorry, two and a half percent would be thirteen forty-three seventy-six. The total out of the budget for the three percent is three seventeen six six three point seven nine. And the total for two and a half percent?
Is two sixty-four seven one nine point eight two.
I'll motion a two and a half percent increase at thirteen forty-three seventy-six per employee, excluding council.
No second.
With the two positions maxed out?
They might not max out at two and a half.
I can email you all and let you know who that would affect possibly.
I know there had been a request, so for clarification, there had been a request from probation that they receive a raise from us this year. Uh, this is for employees. If the state has always told us what their raise is gonna be, if the state this year said zero, um, what, how does that, I'd like clarification in your motion for that.
Does that include probation, does this number?
It did not.
No.
Does that, how? Includes the, it includes part of probation. It includes the.
The non-state set, so their admins and I think the field pro officer.
I would amend my motion to include those employees.
Well, we need to have some discussion on that if we're gonna include probation employees because we did get, I think, uh, I've got that paper in my packet. I don't have it. We were presented with either a three-year or a five-year payout for probation at one point. And when you take the overall average on that, they were ahead of our employees on that payout. That's why I'm bringing that up.
At the top of my head, five percent.
Yeah, I think over the course of the last three or four years, there, a difference of five percent that they've been, that we have increased them at, from direction from the state, that we have not increased all other employees.
Correct.
Yes. So, I guess I have, I would have a hard time voting for that also. I would, I would be against, I would be against going against the state's wishes for those employees.
I've been to a couple conferences now over all the changes coming up and what we can prepare for. And I've tried to meet with as many, like counties in Indiana, during breaks or even during sessions and talk about what everyone's doing and no one's doing that. They're all letting the state keep control of those, uh, changes. I haven't found one.
Yeah, I think I'm in favor of letting the state control that.
You made amendment to, or you made a change to your motion, but I've not heard a second on it. Do you have, are you sticking with your motion?
Uh, well, at the direction of the rest of council, I will amend the motion to not include the additional probation employees. And again, follow the state.
And there again, it isn't against probation. We have a wonderful probation. It's just, you know, we followed in the past and.
Sure. I think it's, I think it's a matter of fairness to everyone involved.
Do you have a motion on?
I have a motion and I have, I believe, a second because if you could, if you could restate your second to make sure that it covers any amendments that he made to his motion, or just?
I'd make a motion that would go to the two point five percent, but the probation or, now, does that, does that go back and count for Paula? That, that don't have any effect on that, does it?
Yeah, that.
Paul, this has always been separate from probation.
So.
It affects, our decision affects Paula and her entire state.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever you have heard, that's what our place gets.
Okay. Yeah, I just make a motion that we let this, let probation be handled by the state.
Okay, I have Nick's motion. I'm just asking that you are in.
Yes.
You are in favor of everything that his motion stated. And for clarification, I'm gonna restate my understanding of your motion is that you're, you're making a motion for a two and a half percent raise for all employees based on, um, across-the-board raise of a thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents per employee.
Excluding council.
Excluding council, including commissioners and knowing that the surveyor and the coroner will max out at a lower, probably a lower rate than the thirteen forty-three. And Tiffany will send us what that final number is.
Correct.
And then, so I have a motion to second. Is there further discussion, please? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And all those opposed, let be shown as passed unanimously with all members present. Before.
Tom's not present.
I said with all members present. It was passed unanimously with all members that were present.
Thank you.
That's, that statement means that Tom's not here.
Yeah.
Before we go to public hearing, are there any other additions, corrections that we wanna add to the budget before it goes to public hearing to set it for next month's meeting? Any other discussion or changes? I'm gonna ask this. I ask it every year. You probably already expect it to be coming, but has there been any changes made to the budget since the last time this body may met and discussed and made decisions on it and then it's come to you or anybody else? Has anything from what we approved been changed on the budget?
There were a few changes that were made that was emailed to everyone that is included in this final number. And those workings like insurance amounts that were missing and things like that, moving of people to get budgets to actually be able to be funded. So, all of that information has been sent.
All right, hearing nothing. I am now going to open up the floor for a public hearing. Anybody would like to speak on the budget that has been presented and that will have its final, final approval at our next month's meeting? The floor is open for you to come forward and speak. Come forward, yes? State your name and the floor is yours.
Morning. I'm a Welly County assessor. Just speaking with Jennifer, I just whispered to her just a second. And now, when you're talking to chief deputies, you know, with, with giving them across the board, if we give the, if there's an across-the-board there, then there probably need to be an adjustment for our chief deputies where they're, you know, if we don't close that gap at that fifty percent and how that's handled. Because currently, chief deputies are eighty-five percent of the elected official salaries.
Yep, and this might get them a little bit closer than that eighty-five percent.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so no adjustment there. I mean, they, they would, we would not go with the eighty-five percent.
The eighty-five percent is a recommendation that we try to stay close to from whis. It's not a set in stone and it's, um, a little bit of a casualty of doing the system this way when we've set it that way. But this is actually going to, it's not going to widen that gap. It's going to lessen it.
Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate it.
I think we just wanted some clarification.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Then I will close the public hearing and we should have everything set then as far as any discussion that we need to make for you to get the final document together and for us to approve the budget at our October meeting. Next item we'll address today is the capital improvement plan for Columbia Township. Who's here to speak on that, please?
I'm the Welly Township Board. I don't think we need to improve review. I don't think we really need to bring this to you at this point. So, we can address it now or, I guess, you know, looking at the statute, it says, the plan shall be considered by the county fiscal body and reviewing the township budget. So, whenever you review the budget, I guess it's not really review it. So, or I can give it to you now. Do you guys know what it is, the capital improvement plan? No? So, this is part of our fund and Senate Bill One. We have to pass this by the end of September or we lose our township funding. So, but we don't have a plan yet adopted yet. So, we have a public hearing and then adopt the plan. It's, it's a wish list.
Okay.
So, and you wanna use up all your money in the wish list. You don't have to spend it. Uh, or, uh, there's this township roads and bridges fund that gets, that gets set up regardless, but then it gets funded and the county or municipality gets to spend the excess funds and your unrestricted funds. But I don't want to waste your time. So, this is, we've, we've been, Tamla and I have been trying to figure this thing out and primarily, so Sarah Krusty had, but I'd be probably lying. So, I'll deal with that. So, I don't wanna waste your time with it. So, at this point, so I'll let you guys review it. Whenever you review the budget, I'm not sure how that process works. Is that sometime later?
I'm not quite sure that I've ever been through a capital improvement plan for, for any of the townships yet, so I guess I don't know what the process is.
Do you want me to go, do you want me to give you what we have so far?
I would. I would like to hear it.
Okay, that's fine. I'll run through it real quick. And ours is probably gonna get changed some between now and when we adopt it, but.
Tiffany, the only thing with them budgets from the township, as long as they didn't use it years before, if they go over three percent, we can tell them, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you guys look at all the other stuff and we've never looked at anything else, I guess.
So, they, the new law breaks this out between restricted funds and unrestricted funds. So, restricted funds are safe from the, uh, the money. So, this is essentially a money grab is what I would call it because I think townships have tons of money sitting around. And we did three, four years ago, so we started, you know, replacing fire trucks and other fire equipment and that money's disappeared briefly. So, no fire equipment's very expensive. Uh, so anyways, uh, fire fund, fire cume, uh, core relief, those are unrestricted or restricted, so we don't have to worry about them in the capital improvement plan. So, we have rainy day is the first page and then general township, general fund and the township recreation fund. Um, so we've got estimated cash balance and I'll, I'll be, we need to revise this plan some because this was a quick, Tamla and I did this quick two weeks ago. This, I've been trying to figure it out and she has been too. There's been some videos, but I, the Township Association is trying to explain this, you know, this passed in April and, yeah, anyways, how they're doing this whole thing. So, two, three, fourth page back is where the capital improvement plan is. And so, total spending that we have so far is ninety seventy and we're not sure. This is, this is a wish list and this isn't. So, the wish list is there to stop the, to make sure we don't lose our money to this, that we've already set aside, uh, to the township roads and bridges fund. So, so, uh, so we've got the purchase of a pumper tanker truck that's probably a little higher than it would be. So, we're, I think realistically, we're probably gonna be in the five, four to five hundred range when that comes back. About some replaced township HVAC equipment, which that's probably gonna be the next year or two. And then we have to upgrade the fire department radios for the eight hundred megahertz requirement. Then there's this thing for the outdoor health and recreation under township for the recreation fund. Hopefully we have the recreation fund moved over to the rainy day fund and we don't have to mess with that. But again, the wish list to make sure, uh, just have, yeah, they've, the CL Kuhnrod Accounting Firm did a good presentation on this in one video I watched. It's, if we do our job, money won't be put into this fund. That, that's where we're at. Any questions or?
I have, I, I have a question. It's not really a question. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you just presented. As long as you allot these funds to something, they're locked in and you can still accumulate the funds to that in the future to get your final total and they're not gonna come in and say we want our portion of these leftover funds.
Correct. Going to the roads and bridges fund, which is, we have to set this fund up, but we don't have to actually fund it once we don't have excess funds. It's thirty percent of, so if you have a cash ba, so if we had this cash balance, it would come down there. The bottom of, so if you go back to the first page, you've got the adjusted es, the, the bottom line would be that thirty percent transfer. So, if you have a positive number there, you got a hundred thousand dollars in the, next to the bottom, adjusted estimated December thirty-first twenty-six cash balance, you'd lose, you got a hundred thousand there, you'd lose thirty thousand in this road and bridges. So, it's.
So, there's really a way to avoid that.
There's a way to avoid it, yeah. And it's, it's been a mad scramble. I thought we had to present this to you and apparently we didn't. I, I've just been trying to make sure we, the big thing is if we don't have this adopted by the end of September, we lose our luck.
We need to be educated on all the. We need to be educated on all the changes also, so I don't think it does.
This is one of those things legislature did, was probably consulting any of us, whether that be council or but I know you guys are dealing with your own mess of that also, from the SKE one, so. We'll have this done by the thirtieth, and so we maintain our levy and provide fire, fire service and keep the cemeteries going.
So what do you use for cemetery fund? You taking that out of rainy day?
Cemetery comes out of general.
General?
Yeah. So, yeah, so I don't think we had anything in here, did we have anything in cemetery acquisition? For the time being, we're good in acquiring new ground, so we don't need to, but the fire trucks, so the, well, keeping the money we set aside for the fire equipments, our biggest goal in getting this thing passed, so. Anyways, any other questions, or I don't want to take more of your time, and we've got a lot of stuff tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and yeah, whenever you review the budget, that's why the capital improvement plan will be there, thanks to Senate law.
Paul Warden, please, additional appropriation request.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I believe you have in front of you another additional appropriation request for a donation that was made for veterans treatment court. So that will be, or have a positive in our donation fund specifically for veterans treatment court programming, but we can't spend it till I have your approval to do so.
And it's, and it's appropriation of five hundred dollars. Is there a motion on it, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and it is approved, thank you, Paul. Mark Sturdivus, please, additional appropriation request.
Good morning. I'm here this morning with a question, additional appropriations for overtime for the maintenance department, in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Any questions for Mark, please?
Is this for past, or is this for future?
We are currently, I think around twenty-one hundred dollars in the red right now.
Most of this because of the jail?
Some is because of the jail, some is for some of the projects that we're working on.
Chad, is there any update on any clawback for overtime?
Yeah, so we did have a meeting, Tiffany and the commissioners and I had a meeting with Andy Ewoksberger, our county attorney, and presented him with everything he's reviewing it, he's let the contractors know of his involvement. And so there's some forward movement, I got an email from Andy last week just saying that he's aware of some of the resolutions that we made, some of the plans that we put in place to get the issue resolved, and I can let you give a little update on, you know, how we're moving forward with the cleaning of the condensers and replacement of some parts and that sort of thing, and moving the system to give Aon control of the system. I mean, you know the technical terms, I got, I got the high level understanding, but if you want to give a little update on that, that'd be great.
Sure. So originally, we had it set up to where the controls were done by the third party, vendor at the controls. There was some confliction between what his program was telling the Aon units to do, and the Aon units were trying to protect themselves, so they weren't speaking the same language, in other words. So they have since, last week, they went through and changed all the units back to Aon controls. All we're using the third party for is to just read what they're actually doing. So we can look at it on the screen, we know what the units are doing. We still have ongoing issues with several of the units, despite of moving those over to back net or Aon controls. We're currently working through those, they've warranted some parts, they're waiting on Aon to approve the warranty items and get those ordered, get those put on. Originally, doing the PMs on the units, we noticed that the the coil, the A coil in each unit did not get cleaned after the building was finished. So in the agreement, they were supposed to be cleaned once they released the building to us. A lot of those did not get cleaned, we caught that, and we're going to be scheduling those to be cleaned this fall at no cost to the county. Craig will be coming back and clean those units.
Does that cause any problems with using the units when they're not clean at this point?
I don't believe so.
And again, I'll remind you too, that we, we signed a substantial completion for the building and its contents, and it excluded the heating ventilation and air conditioning, the rooftop units were excluded from the substantial completions, so the warranty has not yet started for us, we'll still get a one-year warranty after we accept those units. So it was the HVAC and plumbing that we were excluding, plumbing seems perfectly fine. We're, we've talked about doing another separate substantial completion for plumbing and still excluding HVAC. So once, once we've, once we feel very confident that the issues with HVAC are completed, then we'll sign the substantial completion for that and start the one-year warranty.
A motion that we approve the additional appropriation of ten thousand for the overtime.
No second.
Motion is second, is there further discussion, please? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And let it be shown in this passage unanimously, thank you, Mark, which members that are present. Ryan Getz, please, additional appropriation and transfers.
Good morning, Kansas.
Morning.
As far as the transfers go, these transfers are to cover the salary for our part-time mower. This year has mowed since May twenty-sixth, and his mowers are just what's going to be complete next Friday. We'll keep him around during our busy season of ditch work as well as, should be seeing, so we'll have to take some of our normal full-time workers for the mowers tasks to cover the mowing, so that, the first one is eleven hundred dollars from travel and mileage, into truck driver part-time. Another one is nineteen hundred dollars for the cell phone, two truck drivers part-time, and fourteen thousand from culverts to truck driver part-time to cover his salary for the summer.
He made seventeen thousand dollars in summer mowing? Did you, did you have a line item in your budget for that, or was that all used up, or was it just, was it that's?
There's no line item yet.
So how do you, how did you usually pay that in the past?
If you recall, our mowing issues, we did have two mowers to use, and we said one, and I mowed for a couple of years, and I have two mowers. Unfortunately, I didn't get a number twenty-six budget either. I'd kind of like to see how twenty-six goes, if we can, if we're going to, and I assume we will. So I'll probably be back next year to do this, but for the twenty-seven budget, we will have a line item in place.
And then I guess I would be curious as to how there's fourteen thousand dollars extra money in your culverts? Did you not do culverts this year, or as many as you anticipated?
Correct, we didn't, we didn't do this, we just may have a year pass.
Okay. Before we move on to the additional appropriation, we want to discuss the transfer resolutions as a package, please.
Can you take the culvert excess and move it to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to have a line item.
Let's say the guy's doing a good job.
He does an excellent job, I appreciate it.
He can stay out there for a long time out there, cutting brush back.
Is the new mower holding up good?
Yes, they're doing, they're doing wonderful.
Now you got rental fee in here for parking on my property anywhere on here, I don't see.
I still didn't see any of that.
Just kidding.
He's getting your corner short.
Yeah, he is, he's knocking them back. Did a good job.
We appreciate your help as well as many other residents who live in county flooding, those parker and mowers helping about, so we don't have to run them all the way back to town.
Saves.
Takes a lot of fuel and time, absolutely.
Welcome anytime.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for these three transfer resolutions bundled together, please? So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, please, and it passes unanimously with all members present. Go ahead, Ryan.
Of course, this additional appropriation, I can put together a timeline, and it begins over the past eleven months in October of twenty twenty-four, I came before council, presented the truck purchase plan and at a regular meeting on October eighth, and council asked that I get more solid numbers, and did some quotes from the various vendors, which did, that took longer than I expected, it was up to November of that year, in twenty twenty-four, it was December third, returned estimates, leaderships for two single axle dump chassis bodies, three pickup trucks, one medium-duty chassis with body and a one-ton chassis dump body. And at that time, council voted, and we agreed to proceed, and asked for a good process to be initiated for the two large trucks, which we did in January of twenty twenty-five. We had a first, the commissioners meeting, did a second, first single axle dump chassis, the two single axle dump chassis bodies. Did it separately. February third, scoop freightliner, accepted by the commissioners, two single axles, western star forty-seven, has dump chassis and collider part equipment, this will really be at work. And that's, that is the equipment that's necessary. Originally, the appropriation that I was going to ask for, it was considerably higher, as you know, but that's been reduced due to unfortunate news I received last week from collider part equipment. But due to unforeseen delays in beds, dump beds for those two chassis that have been delivered, two, two collider have been pushed out. Delivery date's been pushed out to June or July of twenty twenty-six, we were originally hoping to have those trucks on the road this winter. So removing the two hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred dollars for the two dump beds takes the appropriation request, which I emailed last week, I believe Tiffany's going to have it right after we do, down to two hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and twelve cents, which will be added to our remaining equipment budget of one hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. And that covers the two chassis, western star, the ones we paid for, just going to pay for the dump bed for the one ton forward, and for the chassis and body and other equipment for the medium-duty Chevrolet sixty thousand. So this will, all those should be coming to completion very soon. And we've already received an invoice from western star.
And where does this money come from, Tiffany?
Um, that comes from his cash balance in the eleven seventy-six.
What is that balance, please?
Two million five hundred and fifteen thousand nine sixty-six and twenty-one cents.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan, please?
Make motion, we approve the additional appropriation resolution ordinance of two nine two seven one seven point one two.
Couple motions are second, please?
Second.
Motion is second, is there further discussion? The only further discussion I would like to add is that the explanation that you just gave us on what this money is for is what we're approving this money for. If any of that would change, another truck comes into play, something doesn't happen, it gets switched. Anything happens other than what you've explained and given us a detailed description on today, needs to come back to us for approval without the expectation that money can be spent in other ways.
This is the only thing we're going to use it for, if anything, if it happens to change, I'd be back in a minute.
Okay. Three other discussion, please? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and all those opposed, let it be shown in this passage unanimously with all members of the present. Thank you, Ryan. Chad, Park, please?
So this is a head center layer that funds that we committed for regional sewer districts have pervert back to us. There is going to be asked from regional sewer district for a little bit of support as they had planned on being funded for the project, which would have been rent and generating, not, not in large amounts, but would have given them the money to continue to operate, they're, they're going to ask for some help with their, they're being audited currently, and they're there, they have been sufficient funds to cover the cost of the audit and any help that they'll get from acre tillage. And Matt Shipman represents them, he's working with acre tillage to get a price, we don't anticipate that to be a large sum, but they're going to ask that the county help them, so that, you know, the commissioners back at Beacon, two thousand seventeen had, had established this sewer district, but then it became its own political subdivision, its own unit, so it's not it's not county government, but it is something the county government created, and and so they're, they're looking to the county for a little bit of support as, as they decide what they'll do next. And there's a lot of thoughts on whether the, whether the district will continue, but that's neither here nor there. that's neither here nor there. So anyway, the money from sewer district that we had committed from our BOD comes back and the commissioners approved in their August, I think, eighteenth meeting or mid, mid-August meeting, a new ARPA resolution that shows that, that $890,000, I don't remember exactly the number, but it shows that going into loss revenue. So that we're asking for, for your approval, your, to concur with that rolling into county general and being utilized for those larger expenses like insurance for a minute. And that will save the balance for county general that can then roll into next year's budget.
We certainly appreciate that. We don't get that often enough. This resolution will be titled 2025-05. Motion that we approve resolution 2025-05. Second. A motion is second. Is there further discussion, please? All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand and let it be shown that it's passed by all members that are present. Seeking to approve three dispatch positions to county general. Who is here to speak on that, please?
I can speak on that if you'd like. It's been brought up a couple of different times. They virtually expanded their presentation that E911 funds are not going to be able to sustain how they have been. Those numbers have not been increased. Like I said, I know it's been presented, but I just wanted to make sure that they can formally move them in, so I'm asking for a vote for that. And to be able to give them a little bit of cushion in there, I'm asking for that to be taken back to July. So if you approve that, I can bring you numbers of that next, next month, and I would have advertised for those numbers. I didn't want to move anything else from local. Now, so total of three positions, two are dispatchers and one is a dispatch supervisor.
How are they being paid before?
They're out of that E911 fund.
You know, okay. And that's going away.
Not really going away, it's just they've never seen an increase in there and it's not enough to maintain.
My personal feeling on this is we need to leave the positions in the E991 fund, whether we need to supplement that fund versus splitting them out.
We can't do that. You can't just move from essentially one bank to another.
Do we know what that sum's going to be?
It's right around $150,000 for their annual salaries. Obviously, it's going to be less than that for what we're asking for 25, but I can get you those exact numbers.
And that's already, those numbers have already been figured into the budgets we talked about as far as numbers. So it's already figured in what we've talked about.
As far as an increase, you mean?
As far as where it's at in the budget. It wouldn't have ma, it wouldn't matter as far as the increases, right? Well, I mean, it would sign it.
Is the E911 fund going to continue for the others, though?
Yes, it's paying as much, I'm not quite sure what all she's able to pay on that. I know there's some positions and then their maintenance and equipment.
But that's not going to dissolve out, it's still continuing.
No, 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 it just can't fund itself. This is like low.
I understand that, I'm just asking if it's continuing.
Yeah, prices go up, but the prices don't change in what you receive, it just.
Right, I understand.
From a council standpoint, it's always better that we have control of the money in county general than us wanting to be thinking about putting money in other line items because then we lose control of that money and that money can only be used for certain things. And I'm not even sure that we can put money in. We can't transfer money into that account.
I'm only thinking.
Even if we wanted to, we couldn't do that.
My mind just went to splitting out departments. So you've got one department split out in different entities, that's where I was going.
Yeah, and we have that right now with some of them too, like the traffic team is low it, some are paid from low it, some are paid from county gen.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that you can't, there's.
I understand.
We can't transfer money into certain accounts, so that's one of them. We, it'd make any sense to regardless. So looking for a motion, please, to transfer these three positions.
Make a motion that we transfer the three dispatcher positions into county general retro July of this year.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion is second, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and let it be shown that it was passed unanimously with all members present.
I'll bring those numbers back for your next meeting.
Next item on the agenda is the 2026 council meeting schedule. You guys have that in front of you? Please take a moment to review it if you haven't, and I'll ask for a motion on that, please.
Still moved.
Second. Motion in a second for all, and that has been thoroughly vetted, there's no, I've lost mine, there's no typographical errors or anything here, right? Very good, I have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand and let it be shown that it was passed unanimously with all members that are present. Updated job descriptions.
We are asking to amend these 21 job descriptions for maintenance and thrust and community corrections. It's just kind of a cleanup to more accurately reflect their work schedule. So every job description has a section where it says work schedule. In the middle column there shows what the current job description has, and then the column on the right shows what we're proposing for the work schedule.
And these changes are mainly to give the department heads the availability to flex those schedules and, but keep them inside the same parameters.
So this is going to allow the department head, if they're working eight to four thirty, he can come and say, hey, we've got a delay, we need you to come in next week, nine thirty to whatever.
It just allows them, like, for example, your maintenance supervisor right now has eight to four thirty Monday through Friday, it allows Mark to schedule that person a different, like, six to three or something, but to still maintain the three, seven and a half hours.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
And it's more accurate reflection of what's happening.
I'll make a motion that we accept the changes to the description and the job description page.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It passes unanimously with all board members that are present. Thank you so much. Jason, Sheriff's Department, 12-hour shift approval for 2026, please, or whoever would care to speak on it. I find it easier to say no to Billy than I do Jason, always coming anyway.
Oh, we did have a squad meeting and voted on it last week. One no, the rest three yes, and one was a no vote. So it has been approved for our guys. I guess what information do you need from me? Do I need all the packets as time?
I think you pretty much provided all the information to us. Is there anybody that, is there any questions of Billy or the sheriff from anyone?
I know you've been working on this a long time. I'm glad to see it in front of us.
The only stipulations that might come arising as far as payroll is the hours worked per week, this came up. I don't know, they got to approve that because the short week you work 36 hours, long week you work 48. We go to the two-week, 80-hour period, anything over 80 is overtime, anything below 80 is taken. And if you work that schedule, each officer would have to flex four hours just each pay period to stay on the road. And I talked to Noble County, Cazasco County, somebody else. But Busco, please, part of work, so that's how they work it. Something like Busco does comp, we ain't going to get into that. Just each officer flexes four hours each pay period, the one shift you work an eight-hour shift, it's over twelve, they'll put you at eight hours, or you move toward. It gets you away from overtime unless you got training or a massive call out for whatever incident might be going on.
We were kind of led to believe that this would not increase any type of compensation. So is your plan to make sure that those, that time is flexed? Is that what, is that part of your schedule plan?
Yeah, it'll be mandatory flex unless there's an event that it can't.
I believe it's going to be probably built into the schedule.
Yeah, right.
So like, when the schedule comes out, everybody's going to know when their day, their hour shift.
More likely each officer will have a certain day in that two period, hey, this is your time to flex your hours. And so it comes out free for all. Yeah, so it's not just a disarray.
So it'll be shown on the schedule so they know when that day's coming, when that eight-hour shift is coming.
Yeah.
And your intention is to do the same thing with training?
Well, training is going to, it'll be shift dependent.
It's in there, it, it's probably in their workday anyway, you're just.
Well, third shift, more or less than not.
There's still going to be overtime, there's going to be flex. It's more or less a covered schedule, anything from April to about August. That's where you run in your vacations, we got a lot of our guys now, we start families, kids. That's what we're trying to cover. It's not so much, we have no problem with the training stuff because the guys tend to train while they're working. Most of the problem is covering somebody when we get people on BTO and trying to backfill that BTO, obviously, because we can't just have somebody off the road. So we have a minimum, that's what we need to make, and as our minimums should be three and not two, if you cover three hundred sixty square miles of county road. So we still work a minimum of two, which technically should be three, so that's what our aim is, try to put more people on the road more times and be visible.
Will this create any needed items such as extra cars?
No, no, everything's the same. Just we're taking away one shift, combining them to two, so.
And there'll be a certain offset on the overtime because the actual overtime rate is going to drop a little bit, isn't it?
Yeah, it's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a good trade-off. Oh, I mean, not a good trade-off, but there's a trade-off there.
Yes.
You know, when you look at the number of days off that they get periodically here, it'd be nice.
Technically, you are working about another 120 hours more annually.
Per calendar year.
However, you're combining that into the day shifts, so you're getting more days off and actually working more hours. So the reason for the big meeting was, is we wanted to understand, we needed the guys to understand and make sure they were clear that that was, like we talked about last time, that was going to affect your hourly, your overtime rate, double time rate, your holiday pay. That was going to be affected. Your, your end stuff, your wage was not going to be affected, but it is going to cut into that. You're going to work 100 more hours for the same exact pay. And most of those guys, and most of those guys are willing to trade that off and to do, to continue to do the work because of the flexibility of the schedule that it gives and allows on the weekends and being able to plan things better, everything throughout the year. So it was a trade-off, they are accepting more work, more hours worked for the same amount of pay, but in turn, they're going to get every other weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday off, which is before now, which I've heard of in our type of realm. So, and this came about, it wasn't anything from anybody sitting here, it came from discussions over the past seventy years from the people working that shift. So it wasn't something mandated or something governed by administration, this came from the guys that are actually out there on the road working.
Any other questions for Billy or the sheriff? Or Todd, I don't leave Todd. Thank you, guys. Is there a motion?
Personnel did give a favorable pass on this as well.
Did it.
I will motion that we change the current schedule to 12-hour shifts in Sheriff's.
When does this start?
Exactly.
To start in June.
A second. Motion is a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Let it be shown that it was passed unanimously by all members that are present. Nick, do you have a personnel committee report, please?
Other than the Sheriff's Department, schedule change, not a whole lot. We had a discussion on changing ordinance, 2019-11, possibly repealing it, and then looking to commissioners creating policy rather than ordinance.
Thank you for that. Chad, Commissioner report, please.
We're pretty well covered. Everything with the sewer district and the ARPA, I can't recall, I gave these quotes to J and K Communications about moving the VHF equipment from the old jail tower to the highway department tower. This is something we're still wanting to move forward with. The purpose is that there are still fire departments that are using VHF, and we would like to, even after everyone is on 800, have the VHF equipment for redundancy and for just a backup system. So this person's supportive of this and look for your support and funding. And I'm, you know, this is obviously not an agenda item, I'm happy about next month and make it an agenda item, but when we asked, spoke about it, I had said that, you know, that I thought that I had a way to fund it in that way was the ARPA funds that we got back, but as you know, we just rolled those in the check. So, you know, just wanted to keep this on your radar. If you're not willing to make a decision today, then I'm happy to make it an agenda item for next month. One page is the cost for moving the equipment, the other page is the cost for making that something happen.
I guess I would want to ask the question, why isn't this being moved to the jail versus the highway department?
Because we already own the tower, we own the tower. So we don't have to construct the towers, we just move the VHF.
Okay, I thought you were moving the towers.
This was something that I worked very closely on early on. You know, he has a pretty good understanding of, there's only two adjustments that will need to be made. One is the equipment on top of the jail needs to be adjusted from, it's like a line of sight, so needs to be adjusted from the tower at the old jail to the tower at the highway. And there was one other piece of equipment that would need an adjustment, so.
I thought you were moving the tower, and I thought that quote was low.
No, no.
Okay, that makes sense now.
No need to construct. So we just, you know, time shifts need to, they need to start working toward investing in that 800 equipment, but they, like Ford, for example, have made purchases for fire trucks and that sort of thing, and they have limited funds in CANOMs and 800 equipment for paging, so fire is still being paid.
And now it's going to be harder.
On the VHF, right. So, but I think as we move forward, we've worked with Fire Chiefs Association, everyone has an understanding that we are, we are migrating to an 800 system. VHF, you know, I think we've talked about this before, but it gets narrow-banded, it gets, it gets harder to use because the, the signal's out, it doesn't have great strength or whatever. And I'm not the best person to explain it. Ed from EMA is very, very good, Tom has a very good understanding, and he could echo many things if you were here. So, you know, if you're more comfortable waiting, that's okay.
I'd like to see it on the agenda myself.
So could you please make this an agenda item for next month? And that's all I have, we've covered everything else.
I'm not sure. I appreciate your opinion, but I'm not sure why we need to postpone this. This is something that's a public safety issue and it seems like that's going to be the thing that we do. I think we look at this, we get it approved and get them moving, J and K moving on it to get equipment moved rather than putting it off another month. get them moving, J and K moving on it to get equipment moved rather than putting it off another month. I'd like council's views on that. I know it didn't make it to the agenda, but we can still address it, and I'd like to address it today.
I'm assuming it would be paid out of County General.
Where are you guys?
Question. When's that supposed to start, Chad? Because I know we talked about, like, when are they supposed to do that, move everything?
We haven't set, we haven't set that yet, because I hadn't gotten the proof of that.
I don't know what your aspect on, but I, I like Thor's attitude on this, because the thing is, is right now we're gonna get into climate weather, the climbing weather, and the timing, things like that, so to progress through this today, I would like to see something, I'd like to see it be addressed today. Just because it's been talked about for probably two years now, whether you know it or not, of trying to get everybody on the same page. It's just breaking down, we're getting to a point now where we're gonna run out of this, the service doesn't stop, the problem is the service contract stops. That's where we're gonna have the problem. If we're gonna need this aligned, we're gonna have to enter another contract. We need to get J and K decent time to get this done when the weather's decent, because I'm sure nobody wants to run the tower in December. So if, this could be addressed like Thor said, it would greatly benefit this project.
And as far as, you know, we have cash reserves, we could see that we would just need an allocation, and we could do that next month, we could do the allocation. If it were approved today, then we could clean it up.
Bring it back in October?
You have money in CEDAT to do that, Chad?
So not allocated. CEDAT budget is tight this year, but there's plenty of money in cash reserves, so if we could, if we could use, you know, if we could get an additional appropriation in the line item for onsite, offsite, that would cover this cost, then that's one recommendation that I would have to cover the cost.
Now, would spoken for anything else?
Not the cash reserves. Not the cash reserves, yeah, so if we could just get, like I said, if we can just get that allocation from like the additional appropriation from CEDAT for onsite, offsite, then I could get, I could notify J and K to move forward, and we could just come back with the addition next month.
I'm definitely with the opinion we need to move forward with it. I guess I'll ask council if you guys are comfortable with moving forward on this today.
Yes.
entertain a motion.
Would we approve both of these? So I think my math is right, sixty, just a tick over sixty-three thousand dollars for both the service contract.
Yeah, so historically, I believe the E-nine-one-one funds covered the maintenance agreement. And what I'm suggesting because of the limited funds in E-nine-one-one is that the commissioners cover this maintenance agreement from CEDAT as well, so. Yeah.
So it'd be a total of sixty-three thousand and seventy-nine cents, is that what you had?
Yeah, if my math's right.
Or you just make a motion to approve the two requests?
I would, I would, I would motion that we approve both requests being paid out of CEDAT rate, is what you said.
Oh, second.
My further discussion would be with the understanding that you have permission to get started on the work order right away, and then come back to us.
Yeah.
Yep, appropriation.
Okay.
Motion is second, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And it passes unanimously with all members present. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes, and are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from August fifth as they were presented to you, please?
There was a misspelling. I want to change it. Under the review, the estimated property tax levying limits. Re-grading wages, I think it's supposed to be regarding.
Yeah, typo.
So you want to make that, bring it to us, or do you want this one signed?
You can sign that, and I can just change it on here, it's fine.
So I'll motion we approve the minutes with the typo being fixed.
Yep. I have a motion a second. Those in favor, please raise your right hand. And those opposed, Joan is sustaining, I assume? Anything from the audience for the good of the cause, please? Ryan, did you raise your hand, or are you just putting your glasses down?
Just putting my glasses down.
Okay. John, do you have anything, please?
Yes, tomorrow, the correction advisory board meets, I am on that board. I am unable to attend, so I invite somebody from the council here to substitute for me.
What time?
Noon. Right, Paula?
Right, thank you.
Is it our community corrections?
It's in the lower level, this building, and lunch is provided. Kim's paying for it.
Yeah, I can make it.
Thank you, John.
That's all I have.
Tim?
I don't have anything.
Joan?
No.
Kim?
No, I don't.
Nick? I have nothing either. Everyone have a wonderful, wonderful month, and we'll see you in October. Thank you for your attention.